I know that, I can't give you an exact estimate, but I know that, you know, I would say that maybe only if I was gonna throw out an estimate, maybe 25% of the projects that requested funding actually got funding is the impression that I got from the state. But it's a highly competitive grant that is decided by a committee. And this isn't, this isn't coming off as a, "You need to do this or we'll never be able to do it." But the committee probably will not look very favorably upon a grant. If we did it two years from now, we would be known as the town that didn't take the money.
Yes.
Is what I'm trying to say. And I say it with all candor. I mean, having worked for the state before, we think that Montpelier is a mindless bureaucracy, but they actually have humans that work up there and understand these things. And, you know, I just think that if we don't take this money, we're probably not going to have a shot at a grant in the near future. I will say that some of the ideas that people have come up with, like crosswalks and things like that, just to put in a simple crosswalk costs several thousand dollars. So, you know, I could easily see a scenario here where we pack around the outside of things, we put in some benches, you know, the trashcans on Depot Street are not well planned out, and they need to be replaced. I could easily spend $60,000 doing very small amounts of work with not that much, with not that much result. This is $60,000 that we're really getting, like someone said, over a half a million dollars' worth of work. So I hope that answers your question.
Oh, it does, very well. So that being said, I'd like to point out that a vote against Article 8 is not necessarily in favor of voting to save $60,000, but it's really a vote in favor of leaving a half million dollars on the table. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. One more gentleman in the rear there.
Chris Tarzlee.
Chris, thank you.
My question is, before we jump into another project, is it my understanding that when we did the roundabouts in the center, we were to, it was, it was, uh, it was budgeted, but it was also grant money to bury the power lines? And before we jump into another project, shouldn't we finish the one that we were gonna get into, or finish? That's my question.
Mr. Beadie would like to answer that.
Was that project gonna be finished?
The undergrounding of the power lines was a separate project from the roundabout project. It happened concurrently, because if we're gonna dig something up, we wanna do it all at the same time, not put in a roundabout and then dig it up the next year to do an undergrounding. So we made sure that the timing was synchronized. They came from two different funding mechanisms, and we spent that money. And there is no grant or funding mechanism to continue the undergrounding project. I agree with you. It'd be a nice thing to do. We could spend the half a million dollars it'll take to finish Phase 2 of that project, and we would have to take it all out of our pocket. If we take $60,000 to do this project, which was also on the list, we get that half a million dollars in leverage. And I wanna make it clear that the $60,000 is not coming from property taxes, it's coming from our Capital Reserve Fund, which is an extension of the old UDAG account. So this won't impact your property tax bill. That's one of the reasons why we think this works so well. We're gonna take capital money, leverage it 10 to 1, and get a project done, which will still leave us with money in the future to address something like undergrounding. If we took that half, say if we have a half a million dollars available, which we don't, and we spent that half a million dollars on a worthwhile project like the undergrounding, we wouldn't have the $60,000 to leverage for another project. This way, we'll have money to leverage another day to get another project off the list. I wanna add that when we did the roundabout project, I was approached by several people who were interested and have invested in Manchester. And they said, "One of the reasons that we're interested in moving our business here or investing in a business here is because the town has shown that they will make the investment in the infrastructure to make this a better place." And so even though we're leveraging our 10% match, or on the roundabout project, a 0% match, because that was all federally funded, we also get another leverage from spending that money that people come in and invest in our community. And it's one of the biggest comments that Pauline Moore or Janet Hurley will hear when dealing with applicants is, "We like it here because the town invests in their infrastructure." And I think that's the best thing that we can do as a municipality to generate economic development, is to take care of what we own and maintain. I hope I answered your question in that longer answer.
Thank you. Also, just a quick opinion with the bicycles. I'll be absolutely honest with you, I'm not, I wasn't for that project on 11/30, but after I've heard all the talk on it, it's made a lot of sense. I like friendly Manchester, I've lived here all my life, but I think down the road, years ago, we used to have to register our bicycles. I think the town oughta go back to it. And they have to pay just like registering a dog.
Yeah.
Yes, my name is Brian Benson, I live over in East Manchester. I understand that it'd be kinda foolish, I think it's $580,000 you get for the grant. It's a pretty good return on your investment for $60,000. And I think the area could use a little sprucing up. Thing that I have that I'm a little confused about is, we're talking about maybe a three-quarters a mile stretch of road, half a mile? To put bicycle lanes into a half a mile of road doesn't make any sense to me, when there's so many other places in this town where it would be more beneficial and people use those roads to ride bicycles on. I think the bicycle lanes in the middle of town are just gonna funnel people into the roundabouts, it's gonna funnel people past Centris, where it's even more dangerous. I'm for the project, I'm not for the bicycle lanes.
Thank you.
Unless they're for John.
Anyone else who has not spoken on this article yet? Alan.
Just kind of a follow-up to that last comment, Alan Benoit. I do ride a bicycle, and there were five people killed riding their bicycle on the road last year in Vermont, which is a record for the state. I think anything we can do to make the road safer is a good idea. And because of the location of this road, I think it's important, because it connects Center Hill, it connects Richville Road, it connects Main Street. So it's, even though it's a short section of road, it does connect to a lot of other roads that cyclists use. So I think it is a good idea to put in the cycle lanes, as well as improving pedestrian comfort along there, because cars do travel at a high rate of speed if you walk there. When it's raining or at night, it's a little unnerving, because the sidewalk is so close to the speeding cars. So I think anything we can do to create a buffer for pedestrians is also a key point that we should consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, anyone else who has not spoken yet on Article 8? If not, Sylvia Jalaveta is very anxious to speak again.
I haven't forgotten what I wanna say. Anyway, at my age, that's a good excuse, right? Having a senior moment, that's an hour long. Anyway, in reference to many of the things that were said, I have a comment in regards to the other side of the coin. And first, I'd like to speak about cities. We're not a city, I consider us a village. And in the cities, yes, bicycles are a big thing. They're a big thing because you can get from one point to another in the heart of the town or city quicker by bike or walking than in a vehicle. If you're, if you live two miles away from where you work, it could take you an hour and a half to get to work. On a bike or walking, it might take you as long as walking, maybe a half an hour, if you're two miles away, maybe you walk faster, it would be 15 minutes. Likewise, on a bike, two miles is nothing on a bike, you can kill that in about 10 minutes. Now, that's my take on the cities and Manchester. Manchester is a village. So I don't think you're gonna promote too many people going to work on a bike rather than in a car, when a vehicle is more convenient and keeps you warmer and drier in certain times of the year, anyway. Now, the other thing, walking, I have walked this town a lot. This fall, I walked every day down from my home, which is on Bonnet Street, near TD Bank, down to Discount Beverage. I wasn't going into Discount Beverage, but I walked that far because of the laundromat. I was closing up the laundromat every night, and I walked that distance in all kinds of weather, right straight through till after the first of the year. Now, anyway, on Depot Street, as you're walking towards Richville, in other words, on the right-hand side of the street, there is hardly any room to plant any trees, because of the location of the buildings, the location of the driveways, the location of the sidewalk, and then, of course, you have the road. There is no room. Take a good look at it when you're going down. On the left-hand side, going down Depot Street, yes, there's room for trees, but it's nicely landscaped. Some of those properties have been done just recently. You take the, what do they call it, the marble mill area, that was just done. And of course, our park was just completed. And John put in another green strip there, for what reason, he only knows. But anyway, I like the idea of a wide road, especially for the bikers. They have plenty of room with the three lanes. No one has any trouble moving over or going around. I think that is an asset to the bikers, to have a three-lane road. And I don't, I wouldn't like to see that narrowed for that reason. Another thing, the lady talked about the darkness of the road and the walk, crosswalks. Now, I don't care much for the brick crosswalks, especially November is a very dark month, as we know. It gets dark around 3:30 in the afternoon, and the darkness there on that road continues right straight through to almost the end of December at the early times. Well, anyway, rather than have that brick walkway, it's better to have, just paint it white, so you can see it without trouble, and you won't stumble or anything else. Those bricks are not easy to walk over at certain times, especially as you get older and if you're wearing heels. I don't wear heels. But anyway, that is, that is a problem. I've seen some ladies who are on these spikes trying to make it across, and those uneven areas are very difficult. And I suggest white paint, take care of the crosswalks, and if you need a bike lane strip, just paint a white line down Depot Street to Richville Road, on either side of the street if you want. You can cover both sides. I can't see spending, whether it's our money, or the state's money, or the United States' money, half a million dollars wastefully. There's so many other things you can do with that half million. That's my take on it. Sorry to get up again, but I-
You still have two minutes.
I won't use the two minutes. I'll graciously allow you to have them.
Thank you. Ray Nevin.
Thanks. Well, Sylvia mentioned we're a village, but actually that, as I mentioned before, 11/30 does not look anything like a village. Okay, so I think, again, this'll tie it all together. But you know, these places like Miami, Boston, New York, and Burlington, has a great bike thing along the lake, goes for miles and miles. And the property values there have like tripled. Here, they're not doing quite that good. Okay? And I think we need an adrenaline shot, and I think this is gonna be a big deal, and I think, I think this will really help us a lot.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move the question.
Well, you were beaten by the town manager, I believe.
He's already spoken once.
If you would like to, if you would like to second his motion, okay. The question now is, shall we cease debate on Article 8? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and we've ceased debate on Article 8. So the question before us at this time, without further debate, is, shall the town support making certain improvements to the Depot Street corridor and authorize the use of up to $60,000 from the Capital Improvement Reserve and Contingency Fund to provide the required 10% match of funds from the State of Vermont Bicycle and Pedestrian Program, as well as the temporary use of CERC funds necessary to pay reimbursable expenses? All those in favor of this question say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
The ayes, again, appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and Article 8 has been approved. Article 9, shall the town support the construction of athletic fields and related infrastructure at the Dana L. Thompson Memorial Park, north of Applejack Field, and authorize the use of up to $75,000 from the Capital Improvement Reserve and Contingency Fund for the construction of the proposed athletic fields? John O'Keefe moves that we approve that article. Is there a second? Greg Cutler, Mr. O'Keefe.
I was hoping to have somebody else speak on this, but actually, they had a youth sports commitment, and they had to leave at 4:15, so you're stuck with me, but I promised the last time today. This article comes out of a lot of work of the Parks and Rec Committee. They've been looking at the issues down at the park. We've been picking up more and more users at the park. Couple of years ago, we picked up Manchester, or not, Equinox Lacrosse, which has a really vigorous program in the spring. The other users of the park are BBA, are large users. MEMS uses the park to some extent, Manchester Youth Baseball, Manchester Youth Soccer. So collectively, all these new users that we're picking up are putting a lot of pressure on the park. Anyone that goes down there in the early fall or the spring would note that just about every field is used all the time. I guess I would be remiss if I didn't recognize two people that make your park what it is. The first one is the one that has all the scheduling nightmares, and that's the, I guess, stage right would be Liz Anule, who works with BBA and MEMS and all the other users of the park to try to get everybody fair access to it. And the other one, who's sort of new to the game, but we put him in charge of it because we had the most trust in him of just about any employee, is Jeff Williams, who oversees park maintenance now with Steve Casey, who a lot of you know. So getting back to the issue at hand here, this article authorizes $75,000 from the CERC Fund, the Capital Improvement Reserve and Contingency Fund, for the purpose of building new fields at the park. These fields aren't really new, though, because a couple of years ago, we actually started using them, even though they're not really even fields. They're dusty, they're rocky. The one corner of the field is actually five feet lower than the other corner of the field. It is not exactly what I would call an athletic field, but it's being used as one. The area that I'm talking about is the area to the north of Applejack Field. So if you're looking at Applejack from the parking lot, it's the entire area to the left. So what we're proposing is two very large athletic fields, and some of you may say, "Well, why are they so big?" And I'll explain in a second. But each field would be 125 yards long and 75 wide, and there would be two of them next to each other. That is large enough for Burn Burton, it's large enough even for a college team. If you wanted to have Manchester United play here in Manchester, Vermont, they could on that field. But what's most important is that these fields are flexible enough that you can actually convert them into four youth fields, 75 long and about 50 wide. So these new fields will be used by BBA, they'll be used by MEMS, they'll be used by Manchester Youth Soccer, lacrosse, football, field hockey, you name it. But they cost a lot more than $75,000. They actually cost somewhere between $350,000 and $400,000. So what I'm saying to you is, you're getting a large return on investment. This would authorize $75,000 from the town, but Burn Burton has agreed to contribute $75,000 to match the town's donation, or the town's contribution. Then, like is, like happens very often here, is another private resident of the area offered to give us $125,000 cash for the purpose of building fields. So collectively now, we have about $275,000. What we don't have is the extra $75,000 or plus $1,000, so that will have to be fundraising. But this will be a significant step forward. What I'm hoping is that we'll be able to raise the additional money and start construction June 4th. If we can afford sod, that will mean that the fields will be used this fall. Now, a lot of you do not have children that will play on these fields, so you may be wondering, "Well, what's in it for me?" If you own a business in town, one of the major outcomes of the Northshire Economic Development Strategy was that Manchester is prime for recreation and youth tournaments. As a person who spends a lot of time in the minivan that my wife and kids wanted to buy, driving around the Northeast, I can tell you firsthand that tournaments are big, big business, especially tournaments that are on Saturday and Sunday. Because unless you like to camp, it means you're gonna stay in a hotel. And unless you like to brown bag it, you're going to be eating in restaurants. What Manchester has that a lot of the tournaments that I've gone to don't have is you can walk from the park to downtown. There's a tournament we go to in Essex, Vermont, that it is about a 20-minute drive to a subway to eat. A 20-minute eat, and then a 20-minute drive back, just to get back to the next game. Here in Manchester, you can go to the Northshire Bookstore between games. You can go to any of the local businesses that we have. The Parks and Rec Committee, next week, will be talking about tournaments. Right now, we have one very large tournament in town, it's the Equinox Lacrosse Shootout. I'm not sure how many tournaments we'd like to develop, we've kind of thrown around the number four, and that seems like a reasonable number. But the interesting thing about tournaments is, I wouldn't think that a tournament during Columbus Day weekend would be a good idea, or the Fourth of July, or Memorial Day. The beauty of tournaments is you can do it after foliage, and you can do it before the summer. So it really is a benefit to the entire community off-season. You know, we're talking about May before Memorial Day, and we're talking about September, the middle of September, and October after Columbus Day. So for $75,000 from the CERC Fund, we're gonna have a lot better park, which I think most of the people in the room, if not all of them, want. But I think that we've figured out the formula for attaching our quality of life and our park to translate it into something that actually means something in our wallet as well. I will leave you with this. A tournament that's reasonable is 80 teams for a youth tournament, about 10 kids a team. So if you extrapolate that out, 10 kids on 80 teams playing soccer over a weekend, the numbers start to get up into the $300,000 and $400,000 economic activity from one tournament. And that doesn't mean that we're all gonna, I think everybody knows what economic activity means. It doesn't mean that that's coming into the town's coffers, but it means that people are driving around, staying in our hotels, eating at our restaurants. So I think overall, this article makes sense. I'm happy to answer any questions from anyone. But I'd urge you to vote aye on article, whatever article we happen to be on. Nine.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
John, we spoke on this before, I think, you and me. Is there a way of generating more revenue out of that park for Manchester? It's an awesome park, it really is. And we've made the investment, we stood behind you, and I think it's time to think about making revenue off of that. That's all.
You may take the question, but first, could I ask your name, sir?
Brad Christensen.
Sorry, Brad, thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Yes, there are ways to actually start increasing, and what we're looking at, and Liz is here, what a lot of people don't see when they talk to Liz is the constant obsession with the numbers of the park. And we're always looking at, you know, what does it actually take to run the park? And I will tell you, for anyone here, it's almost impossible to figure that out. We've put together a number for the Rec Committee, that it costs about $550,000 to run the park, when you consider everything. Insurance, what it costs for Jeff Williams, for his gasoline, for his mowers. Most of the assets of the park do not make any money. The pool costs $100,000 a year, and we only make 50 back on it. Now, interestingly, the one thing at the park that actually is revenue positive is Applejack Field, is the one facility, year after year after year, actually makes, and I'm not saying we're getting rich off it either, but it actually breaks even to actually making money. As far as, as far as these fields are concerned, what we've developed is a maintenance plan, and we've talked to all the different users, like BBA, and we aren't planning to charge MEMS just because of the whole ACT 60 formula. But the current rate for other fields at the park, which will be increasing a little bit, is about $3.33 an hour. The new fields will be $10 an hour. I think that number's probably right, because half the users think it's too high and half thinks, think it's too low. So I suspect that we probably got that number about right. It seems like a reasonable number, but my goal is, just charting out the current users and the hours, is that without tournaments, these fields will be self-sufficient. But to get to the kind of the larger, broader question, I think if the park is to have a big economic driving factor to it, it means tournaments. And these tournaments, you know, for anyone that's been to them, will realize that it's just a big business, and it's probably something that Manchester would benefit from a lot.
Thank you. Yes, Sylvia?
I'm looking at page 10, under Department by Department Summary of the Fiscal Year 2017 and the Budget Fiscal Year 2016. And here, it tells me part, it's the only really good department we have in the town in terms of a moneymaker. From what it says here, under FY216, revenues, $143,500, expenses, $123,500. That's money made. And that's the same with FY217. If you look at the figures that are given here, unless these are not true, maybe they should be reversed. But it's a moneymaker.
I think Jeff Williams might-
Mr. Moderator, if I-
Might quibble with your saying it's the only moneymaking department, when I see 159 for a DPW, but go ahead.
The numbers, when you look just at the department, are deceiving, because as I said to the gentleman earlier who was talking about our budgeting process, there's no salaries in that number. The maintenance numbers show up in Jeff's department. So what you're really looking at is programs, and I, for the most part, I mean, there's other pieces in there, but it's largely the cost of running programs as opposed to the revenue that they generate. The rest of it is in the budget, and that's why John said it's hard to fare it out, all the information. But I believe John's number, because I've spent a lot of time on it, is, it's over a half a million dollars to run the park, and that revenue number is correct. So we may wanna feel good and try to think that it is a revenue producer, but it's really not, nor is it meant to be. And, but what we have to do is try to figure out, as the park is built out and the maintenance aspect of it is increased- aspect of it is increased, that we have a fee structure that covers at least the maintenance, because that otherwise falls on the backs of the taxpayers. The other aspect of a municipally-owned recreation area is that the residents of the town need to have access to it, and they're paying for it with their tax dollars. So we have to be very careful that we don't develop a fee structure that leaves them out of the mix. It's really important that this is a town asset that can be enjoyed by the citizens of the town. I want to make that very clear. But these new fields, great opportunity, it's something we've talked about. Once again, we can leverage what we're putting into it with donations, and they will be self-sufficient going forward. So I think it's a well-thought-out plan. We've got pages and pages of numbers on this, if you want to see them.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Larry Landis. John, I have a question for you. You and I had a conversation probably a couple of years ago about the DPW building in the park. And it's great that you're going to do these fields, it's great that it'll be cleaned up. What is going to be done to clean up the condition of that DPW building, which is, it looks like one sneeze and it would be gone? I mean, it's just falling... There are parts of it that are literally falling apart. Has that been considered at all in this project?
Mr. Moderator?
Go ahead.
Actually, I think you're talking about the horse barn that we use as a maintenance building.
Yes.
Yes, we actually have... This is phase one in a four- or five-phase approach to improving the park. There's a couple of different pieces. It's kind of like that game where you have to move the cars around to get everything in place. The DPW department replacement is actually on that plan. And under that, the maintenance shed would actually move back, would be pushed back, sort of out of the way, would be in the general area, and then the parking lot would actually be extended a little bit over there. Meanwhile, Jeff Williams has done some work to it to sort of shore it up, like we've put some pavement down on the ground, and we've done some other work inside the building that's short-term. But that actually is in the master plan. The trouble with a maintenance shed, as you probably are aware, it's hard to fundraise for a maintenance shed. People don't really want to... Unless you're really into maintenance, people don't usually want to donate to that. But that is on the plan, and we actually do have to replace that, because I'm not really happy with that facility right now. There's no place to park the trucks, and we're also acquiring more and more equipment down there, as you've probably seen. We now have a 15-foot mower that will make mowing these fields much easier, but it's kind of all out there for the public to see. And I'd like to kind of tuck it back there a little bit more and improve it.
Well, there's another part of it, too. There are garbage piles there. I mean, there's materials that they just dump.
Yep.
And some of it is just never going to be used, because sometimes the guys there, you know, we say, someone will say, "Do you need those?" No, take them. And it's just lying there, you know, it's pretty unsightly.
We'll get it cleaned up. Actually, the... You probably remember this. The dog park was built on what used to be our kind of Rec Department dump.
Right.
Which was even worse. But I will talk to Jeff about it, because what you've probably seen over the years is we are taking more and more pride in the park. The guardrails was an example of something that when you drove into the park, it looked like no one really cared. What is interesting is over the last several years, we've gotten a lot more comments, positive comments, about the condition of the park. Not that it's how we gauge government, but TripAdvisor lists our park as like the best place in the world. It's like Disney World.
Well, the combination of the lighting that went in and the pool house and everything else, it's really taken a lot of positive steps. But that one building is... It's a toughie.
It is, and it needs to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. In the rear, Mr. Lyle?
Well, it looks like another one passed without saving any money.
Could you speak right into the mic? It's difficult.
It looks like another one passed without saving any money. Now, with the construction of the athletic fields, didn't Burn Burton just improve their athletic field at a pretty good cost? It seems to me the football field, they spent a lot of money on it fixing it up. And Applejack being profitable, will Applejack be profitable if in fact they have to share their profits with more athletic fields? These are just questions I'm asking.
Well, I'll talk about the Burn Burton field. I think Mark has left. Seth is here, if he wants to talk about it. But the interesting thing about the Burn Burton field, and what we've talked about with Dave Micali and Seth and Marcus, the challenge with it is, it's a beautiful facility, but it actually didn't add any inventory to the town's field inventory, because it was already being used as a field. What it did do is, it created a hole in the town's inventory as far as softball, because the town's only softball field was on that area where they built their new field. So now, as part of this master plan that I was just talking about with the maintenance shed, the so-called Pool Field, which is the field to the west of the swimming pool at the Rec Park, would be converted to a softball field. So we do work very closely with BBA to make sure that we're coordinating fields, but the new field that BBA built doesn't actually create any new inventory. So what we're trying to create here is more inventory, because it's a general consensus among all the users of the park that have these organized youth programs, that we don't have enough fields in town, especially good-quality ones.
So this is absolutely necessary, I guess?
Very few things government does is absolutely necessary. Printing money, providing for a common defense. I'm not sure, you know, some people say that recreation is an absolute essential. What I think it is, is it's a quality of life. If we want to attract younger workers here, we're going to have to provide them the resources that they want. The fields that we currently have at the park range from Applejack Field, which is the very, very best grass field in the state of Vermont. In fact, it's going to host a series of college soccer games this fall. So it's good enough that colleges want to play on that field. To Lions Field, which actually has 18 inches of difference between the high and low points. And that's not like this, that's this. It actually has 18 inches of difference. Nap Field is overused, and is potholed all over the place, and the Pool Field is certainly less than perfect as well. The fields at the park range from anywhere from outstanding to terrible.
So you're saying if we get another field, we'll attract young people to the town?
Absolutely. I can't say that. What I'm saying is that we're trying to put in place the infrastructure necessary to attract younger families.
What about Applejack being profitable right now? And what will happen if they have more athletic fields that are now competing for that profit?
Applejack really is not going to be replaced with these fields, because Applejack is a lit stadium. The big allure to Applejack Field is that it's lit, and you can have games at night. Just like Major League Baseball. Major League Baseball changed when they started having night games, and people could actually go to games on weekdays. That's the thing about Applejack, is with most of us working, we want to see soccer and football games at nighttime. So I don't see Applejack being replaced by these fields. Applejack is, like I said, the only thing at the park that really, I can tell you 100% certain, makes money.
Couple of things. If we're going to be adding fields to what is already existing at the park, where is the parking going to come from? And would we be better off to take this $75,000 and upgrade what's already there?
I don't think so, because if we upgrade what's already there, we won't be getting $75,000 from Burn Burton and $125,000 from a private donor. As part of the plan that the Rec Committee put together, though, the area north of Applejack Field is currently the overflow parking for tournaments in the Fourth of July and things like that. That area will now get transferred to Lions Field. So we're actually moving the overflow parking area to the Lions Field versus the north of Applejack Field. We have about 200 parking spots in the park, and then about another 200 in overflow that I was just talking about. And then we have looked at possibilities of expanding parking elsewhere as well. Part of the plan, though, is, on tournaments, is to actually use some of the MEMS parking as well, that we've been talking about as a community. But I don't think... Personally, I don't think that improving the existing fields, and there are plans to replace, to improve the existing fields later, maybe, but I'm not sure you get the same bang for the buck. What you also don't get, from a logistical standpoint, by improving the other fields at the park that are sort of piecemeal, is you're not creating one overall facility that can be divided up into different uses. Like I was talking about, you know, you could have two larger fields on these fields, or you could have four youth fields. And that's the flexibility that happens in this one area, that you wouldn't have if you improved Lions Field and Pool Field and Nap Field over on the other side of the park.
Right, but I know that even, like going over there for Applejack Field in the evening, there is not enough parking there now.
Mm-hmm.
So if you're going to add two more fields, or in this case, four youth fields, but you're going to be taking away your overflow parking and moving it to another area, you're still not increasing your parking to accommodate for the influx of new individuals coming in.
Well, I don't see it like that, because Applejack, the majority of the games that are big that Applejack hosts are night games, so you couldn't use these fields at the same time, because they're not lit. So I don't think you're having competing uses at the same time. We have looked at parking, but like I said, we're moving the parking area to Lions Field, which is actually about the same size as the field that we're using to park overflow right now.
Right, but if you're going to do a tournament, you're going to need more than two fields. If it's a youth tournament, more than four fields, so wouldn't you use Applejack?
We do use Applejack during youth tournaments. We have a tournament there actually already now that has about 60 teams. Equinox Valley Lacrosse has a tournament in the spring. And they have some crunch for parking, but from a planning perspective, I'm not sure... You know, the old saying that you're building the church for Easter Sunday, you have to provide adequate parking, but I'm not sure I would support using parkland to build the nth degree of parking for the tournament versus using Riley Rink and MEMS parking for those tournaments.
And are you going to be providing busing from those areas?
No, those are connected through the walking path.
Okay.
Thank you. We may be getting to the point where everything has been said, but not everyone has said it. So I would just give you that warning. And Ray Nevin has been sitting there waiting for some time.
I just want to say that I do agree. I think this will definitely bring businesses to town. I think it's great. And on the other side, I mean, we're investing in our youth, getting them away from the computers, getting them out in the field, it's healthy. And I think it's another thing that would, you know, in a small way, in the very least, draw younger families to come into the town. And I think we're heading in the right direction, and I think it's great.
Thank you. Sylvia.
If there's a concern about more parking, I think you've got a good neighbor right there next to the Rec Park, Donnie Dorr. He's got a parking field right there, and I think negotiation with him would be the thing to do.
Mike?
Yes, Steve Nichols.
During our discussion in Select Board, we've gone through this a lot, and I showed some skepticism with John, and he's assured me and convinced me, which is very hard for him to convince me, that... He has assured me that we're not going to add any more tax burden on the taxpayer to maintain these fields. So that was my concern, that, you know, the Applejack Field does turn revenue in, or did, until we had all the games that Burn Burton has moved up to BBA. I think it will continue to do that. I do think that we need the commitment to bring in these students and adult tournaments to fill the hotels that are here. I think we are lacking that. But again, my main concern was the expensive maintenance of the fields and the continued maintenance of what we have. So I would support, and at this time, can we draw the question, Mr. Moderator?
If, since no one else is waiting to speak, I'm going to assume that we can move right on to the question. So I'll spare us that vote. All those in favor of Article 9, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and Article 9 is approved. Before we get to Article 10, Brad West, a longtime resident of town, approached me just before the meeting. He was unable to be here. He wanted to speak on this article. And if there is someone who would volunteer to read his speech, I would appreciate it. Mr. Cutler made a good point last year, that when I spoke someone's question, it left the chair without anyone to object, so I... Thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah, okay. You don't need to start off... What we do need is, you may need to look at his handwriting for a while. We do need someone to make the motion first on Article 10. Okay. Lisa Sewell moves Ed... Sorry, Ed Morrell seconds. And so we have before us, Article 10, Shall the Town Support the Proposed Recreation Path Along the Former Manchester Dorset-Granville Railroad Right-of-Way to Develop a Multi-Use Trail Non-Motorized from Manchester Elementary Middle School to North Road Wendy's Way and Authorize the Select Board and Town Officials to Work on Planning, Land Acquisition, and Rights-of-Way? This is noted as a non-binding advisory article. You may speak first. Dawn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry. I said it's... I'll try to get through this without any motion as well, since I'm his daughter. I am Brad West. As I am unable to attend this meeting today due to prior family commitment, I'm asking for this to be read. I am an adjoining resident and a surrounded, separate parcel property owner to this proposed project. My house and four others are within 100 feet, more or less, to this proposal. From my living room, I... From my living room, my home, I'm not sure how this is, 180-degree view of this proposal, my picture window to the east and two windows to the north are comparison, a view complete, a complete view of this proposal as it is proposed, as it pu... You have to excuse the writing. As it passes my entire north properties lined from Mount Eolus Lane to the Dykes Property. Pertaining the privacy and the quality of life issues we supposedly live here for, I believe mice are flying out the windows. Mice are flying out the windows. Manchester taxpayers are seeing more and more requests for money. The library request will increase every year. The rescue squad is going to require more and more support. Riley Rink will be next, despite they have lost members there. Several years ago, Riley Rink purchased close to 40 acres from May. Their plan was to construct playing fields, trails, and a sports arena. This parcel was zoned agricultural, recreational, or residential. I believe this would be far more beneficial for the town... Am I out of...
No. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't stop it before.
For the town than for said trail to nowhere. I doubt serious bikers are going to consider a two... I doubt serious bikers are going to consider a two-mile trip through fine residential door yards a compelling reason to come to Manchester. Also, at the time of the Riley Rink sale, there was a movement to preserve the banks of the Baton Kill. I donated several acres to the Town of Manchester for the purpose. Thank you for your intention, sincerely Brad West.
Thank you for reading that for us.
Yep, sorry.
I appreciate it. So, in the rear, yes, Sylvia, your name?
Hi, I'm Ellen Ogden.
Ellen, thank you.
I live in Manchester.
Right.
Greetings to everybody. I know we're sitting through this, and we're all wanting to get home, but this is a really important opportunity, and I know a lot of the things that we've been discussing today is really about our future. And I'm speaking as the co-chair, or the chair of the 2020 Vision, that was a group of Manchester residents and all of our surrounding towns were invited to come together and discuss what we want, what we wanted to see in this community in 2020. So I'm really glad that that has been mentioned a couple times, and I'd like to just sort of see a raise of hands of how many people were actually at that meeting at the time. Great, great, so you do understand it, and I'm not gonna get too far into it, but at the meeting, where there were over two hundred and fifty participants, there were four, I think I need my glasses at this point, there were four, there were many, many, many ideas that were shared, and there were four that really surfaced to the top, that were really key for our community to really focus on. One was developing a small business incubator for, to share creative ideas. Another was to open a Riverwalk, to encourage people to enjoy being in the beautiful outdoors in the downtown area. The third was to attract higher education opportunities, so that we can all continue to learn and to grow and expand. And the fourth, which is the one that I want to address today, was to become a biking center and destination. And I know that sounds grand, but we do have so many beautiful opportunities for riding on the roads and off the roads. And this, I keep using that word opportunity, this is an amazing chance for our town to really come together around this concept that we all agreed we wanted to promote. And so, this is really about a vision for our future. At the beginning of this meeting, and I'm not following my script at all here, but at the beginning of this meeting, I just wanted to share with you the five things you should know about the North Road Trail, if you haven't had an opportunity to read it. I'm gonna read it quickly, and then I'm gonna move on. Number one, this trail will benefit the community by offering safe access to landscapes and natural areas for children and families to enjoy. Step two, this is a community-supported initiative that will be a multi-use trail. No motorized vehicles will be allowed. Number three, the North Road Trail allows, follows an existing historic railroad bed, formerly known as the Manchester-Dorset-Granville Line. Number four, according to a 2012 Vermont Agency of Transportation study, multi-use trails enhance property values in residential areas, especially when located near trail systems. And five, this vote is simply to accept a study for the town to explore further the economic benefits for the town. The Select Board will develop the specific conditions of the North Road Trail with assistance from members of the Manchester Bike Task Force Committee. And of course, all of you are invited to attend those meetings at the Select Board when they are held. So I want to say thank you for considering this vote.
Thank you. In the rear, again.
Fern Wagner, and I'd like to speak to the, to us approving this opportunity. I hope that many of you have had the opportunity to explore the proposed multi-use trail. Last week, I was lucky enough to have a guide through this lovely area, which meanders through the woods and passes near two streams. It's a path that should be available to locals and visitors alike to showcase our beautiful town and state. Connecting this new stretch to the trail that the town already has from MEMS to Riley Rink would make it possible to go all the way to North Road and connect with Wendy's Way, which is a designated bike route. What a wonderful place this would be for a family nature hike, or to ride a bike safely off the road away from traffic. I've looked at several economic impact studies, and they all show that property values near bike and multi-use trails increase property values and are highly desirable locations. Please vote yes for a feasibility study, which will not cost the town any money. This study will give us all the information to make an educated decision. We will find out what grants are available from the federal government and the state government to give our town this beautiful multi-use trail for all of us to enjoy. And please, take the time to check out the proposed multi-use trail, get outside, and try it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia.
You might say to yourselves, why are you getting up so often? Well, I go to all the meetings, that's why I'm getting up so often. I've gone to almost, until lately, because I've got a physical problem, I have not gone to the Select Board meetings, or the Development Review Board meetings, or the Planning Commission meetings, or any other meetings. But for years, I've gone, and I hear these projects that are considered, I might say, the birth of the projects, early on. They're considered early on, and that's why I have the input that I do. But in this particular instance, I think we're opening a can of worms in terms of liability, in terms of maintenance, in terms of accessibility, invasion of other properties, and cost factors. I really think that if something happens on one of the excursions of an individual, and they get far along down on that path, and they hit a rock, or something scares them, and they fall off their bike, and they injure themselves, it's not easy for rescue squad or police to get out there to take care of the individual and help them through whatever problem they may have. And there could be other problems in terms of molestation, et cetera, because of the wilderness factor that's involved there. And I think it is an intrusion on a lot of the homeowners who live nearby that route that is being considered. So again, accessibility, invasion of properties, maintenance, who's gonna take care of it? You know, the branches grow, the weeds grow, everything else, the rocks appear. So there's a liability, and there's a cost involved. And the purchase of the land going from that, from the rec park area to beyond North Road to maybe even Kelleher Road, before they enter Wendy's Way, is gonna be expensive. I think you've got a multimillion-dollar project here. It's not a drop in the bucket, and who's gonna be paying for it? Once we start paying for it, we'll be obligated. So it's, you might wanna take all those things into consideration.
Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank.
That's all right.
I'm Amy Werner.
Yes.
I'm on the bike, the 2020 Bike Task Committee. I'm also one of the owners of this bike trail. I just wanna say that one of the most important appeals of extending the current town multi-use recreational part, path, and I'm saying the current, because that's what we already have, at the Manchester Rec and Hunter Park. It is for the benefit of families, school recreation, as well as for out-of-town visitors. I have done some things here, using the park for children, and they have really enjoyed riding their bikes. We have a mountain bike day for the kids, and they wanna go further, and there is more to explore. I have done things for the Manchester for MEMS, putting on bike days, which include rides, and I have, there's been a great response by the school to start using the existing trails that we have provided. As stated by the Rails-to-Trails Conservancy, trails and greenways create healthy recreation and transportation opportunities by providing people of all ages with attractive, safe, accessible, low- or no-cost places to cycle, walk, hike, jog, and skate. Trails help people of all ages incorporate exercise into their daily routines, connecting them with places that they want to go or need to go. In 2000, a feasibility study was presented to the Town of Manchester, and it was known as the Manchester Dorset Recreation Trail. It was prepared by Lewis Berger Group. The purpose was to create a safe facility to access schools and recreation facilities. And number two, to expand the current recreation trail network. There was the need, they said, the current system of the trails does not provide a safe pedestrian and bicycle facility for all users. In the 2012 Town Plan, Part One, Section One, reads, "The purpose and intent of the Town Plan is to describe how Manchester wishes to evolve and mature over time by clarifying the concept and resources and goals that we find essential to the health and the well-being of the community." I am in support of this, and I think there's a lot of misconception, which I hope we can bring up.
Thank you. Robin Werner.
The proposed multi-use trail will use the Manchester-Dorset and Gravel Railroad Bed, formerly owned by Amia, and sold to Old Railroad Bed LLC in 2009 with the intent to make it a trail. All the owners have been paying taxes on this since 1902. Anyone alive today that has acquired property on this railroad bed has known that it has existed before they bought their property. One of the individuals who has built the house along the trail was told by the zoning administrator at the time that he was applying for permit to build the house, Lee Crone, zoning administrator, showed him where the railroad was, which would be right on the edge of his property. A second fellow recently cut down all the trees between his house and the railroad bed. You can't claim to be a victim in some of these cases. After, there are gonna be some other people who are gonna give you some conflicting information to confuse you, but what you should know is, we own ninety-five percent of this trail. There's a couple hundred feet on one end of it, that the individual that owns it has spoken to the town, town, the selectmen, and agreed that if all of the people in Manchester want this trail, he will work something out with us. So it's a real possibility. That's what this vote is for, to show that you support it, that you're in favor of it. And my counsel just gave me a piece of information, this has to do with liability. Persons participating in a recreational activity in Vermont assume the risk inherent in the activity, so no liability for the town for someone who was injured on the trail. Thank you. I'm Robin.
Amy Cusker.
I think that Amy and Ellen have already said everything I was going to say, but I would just like to mention that I am a member of the Board of Trustees of the Manchester Riverwalk. And this, too, is an area where we feel it's important that we maintain the quality of life in Manchester and enjoy the outdoors that bring so many people here. And so on behalf of the Manchester Riverwalk, I would like to state that in our recent annual meeting, we voted unanimously to endorse the efforts to direct the Select Board to explore the 1.7-mile extension of current multi-use rec path that runs from MEMS to Riley Rink, continuing it to the North Road. Excuse me, and urge you to vote yes on Article Ten. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Benoit.
I just wanna reiterate that this article is a non-binding advisory-only article, and that it is not a vote to commit any money, just in case anybody has that misconception. And I do wanna stress, similar to the trails that are on Equinox Preservation, as you can see, they're very well-used, this is going to be a similar type of a trail, and it's going to be a great opportunity for families not to just bike, but also to walk, to cross-country ski, and birdwatch. So there's a lot to this opportunity, and it's not just for people to be riding their bikes on, as some people may think. So with that said, I just want to, I feel that the town should support the proposed multi-use recreational path and this article, number ten. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray Nevin.
A previous speaker had mentioned that the real estate values increase, the houses that are around the bike trail, I've read that as well. You know, we're also competing for people to move up here, and people to vacation here. One town is like Millerton, New York, it's about two hours south of here, Route 22, they've got a long, long bike trail on a rail bed, and I think that town's doing really well. And I think, you know, we need to have that kind of stuff, too, as well. And I think, again, I think we're heading in the right direction here.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Don Dykes, I live on Beatty Lane.
Okay.
I'm one of the seven adjoining landowners.
Right.
I'd like to give some comments that I think this is extremely invasive to our property. You've heard, everything sounds like motherhood and apple pie, I can tell you, it's exactly the opposite, it's pure hell for us. We live on a very secluded lot, we don't see another car, another house, at all. This path would come right through our property, right past our front door. It was about fifty or seventy-five feet from our front door. You hear the noise, you hear dogs barking, and I'm afraid it's gonna bring in the problems we have with heroin now. There is no way to police it. It doesn't, it isn't even a bike path. I mean, who's gonna use this for biking? I mean, we have biking on roads where there's views, this goes through some trees and through our property, crosses right through my property, have some property on one side and some on the other, and that's true with most of us. It doesn't go anywhere. Right now, it doesn't go past Daly Gravel Pit. They need a right-of-way. I've talked to the owner of Daly, that's John Peckham, who owns the gravel pit, and he gave me assurance, and he said that there's so many people that feel that this is too invasive, that he would give a lot of consideration before giving that right-of-way. We talked about the liabilities, about the trash, it'd be noisy, people on these trails talk, they talk loud, and I don't blame them, but you also have dogs barking. I've walked the trail several times from Riley Rink up to the rec center, and I see people walking dogs. I've never seen a biker. The dogs bark, and everybody along here practically has dogs, neighbor of mine has three, I can imagine what that's gonna be like. I'd just like to call your attention to the report that was done fifteen years ago by Berger Associates, studied this very detail, and I don't know why we're studying it again, because I came up with some very definite conclusions. This was, in memory serves me, about a thirty thousand dollar project, and it came up with the following conclusions. It said it would need approval of artifacts, historical concerns, wetlands, animal habitat. None of those were a problem. These would include Act 250, stream alterations, stormwater discharge, wetlands, categorical exclusions, and would need approval of the Army Corps of Engineers. And it would not meet, very importantly, with the ADA requirements, and probably be ineligible for funding from VTRAN. It'd be extremely expensive. In today's dollars, the Berger Report said that it would be about $1.4 million to put this in. There's two 70-foot-long bridges that would have to be installed. In addition, you'd be cutting down hundreds of old growth trees that have been growing since the tracks were pulled up 80 years ago. And there's no easy access. Once you get on this trail, you're on the trail all the way from North Road to either the gravel pit or maybe Riley Rink. It's been very, very stressful for the landowners. We put up with this for six years. I'm asking you now to turn this down. I know it's only a non-binding article. Let us have some peace and enjoy the rest of our time here. This is not the way we do business in Manchester. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Maury Hill, and I've been watching on TV. Thank you, Gina, and boy, you guys have been here a very long time. I'll try to be brief. I have juvenile macular degeneration, which rendered me legally blind about 15 years ago, and I stopped driving so that I wouldn't kill anyone. I am a pedestrian. I'm a biker. Biking in Vermont is very dangerous. It's only gotten worse over the years. So thank you for passing the Depot Street Project, and I really do understand the other side. I also ride in cars when people drive me. But I think we just need to move forward and design roads like they should have been designed in the first place. And I also agree that it is very dangerous to cross that road. I do it all the time, and it's very scary. And John, like you, I don't have a DUI. That's not why I don't drive. 20% of you will probably have to stop driving at some point in your life due to macular degeneration. And also, I like to get out of town once in a while. But stepping back, I do walk and ride my bike to work, to go grocery shopping, to do errands. So I'm also trying to get somewhere as well. It's not just people who are in cars who are trying to get somewhere. And also, I like to get out of town, so I like to bike to Dorset once in a while, and I really would use that bike path. I think it would be great. And one more thing for drivers, please don't use your cellphones when you're driving.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, how are you? My name is Don Linton. I'm the alias tree cutter of Beatty Lane. When I first moved here five years ago, we were told the path that goes through the railroad path, this is by our realtor, was an old abandoned railroad bed, you know, 10 feet wide, went from point A to B of nowhere, and that the likelihood of anybody ever using that would probably not happen. She did talk about the bike path. The possibilities have been discussed in the past, but she did not tell us it's going to happen. We said to ourselves, well, okay, if it goes in, it is what it is, and so we're going to live with that. So I actually called the town to the tree situation and said, you know, what's going on with this bike path? I'd like to cut some trees, clear out my yard behind my house, because the woods are right up to the back of my house. Guy, I forgot who it was, said, yeah, he goes, nothing's going on. I go, well, I'm just going to clear along the backside. I own the property on both sides of this railroad path. It cuts my property in half. So the clearing is across that. The path is 40 feet from center on either side of it, so there were some trees for sure I cut on that path that I should probably not have. But the point is, you know, it is what it is, and it's cleared, and so if that does go in, you're not going to have to clear it. The one problem I have with the whole thing, or we have three dogs. For five years, run free, everything's great. You know, I love dogs, I love everybody else's dogs, but here's an issue. If the path is put in, what happens to the security of not only my dogs, with other dogs, but your dogs running against my dogs? We've had people come down the path, bringing dogs, and they run up into my driveway, run around my yard. My dogs could attack their dogs, and their dogs could attack my dogs. Is there a wall set up that's going to be set up on either side to block that off? Is that another cause? Then the last thing I'll talk about is the safety. I, we know North Road, we know the runners that go down that, and they do all those big, you know, marathons on that road. When you drive down that road when the marathon's going on, it's actually kind of scary, because there's not enough room for people on this supposed Wendy's Way to even run. So if you're coming out of this path, and you're going to hit North Road, and you want to take a left to go down to 30, your kids are going to have a frigging problem with a path that's literally this wide into the road. So point is, if this does go through, that needs to be addressed. That Wendy's Way is a disaster. I mean, it's not right for people. That should be, that should be taken care of first, then maybe attached this path to it. And so that's basically it. It's just safety, and, you know, a lot of issues, and obviously the cost. And the property values, my yard's cut in half now. Do you really think my property value's gone up? I don't think so. So that's, I'm sorry to bother everybody.
Thank you. Katie Dilman.
Katie Dilman, I'm a member of the Manchester 2020 Bike Task Force, and there are a number of questions that have been asked here this afternoon. That is why we need this study, because we have the same questions. We're not quite sure how all this will unfold, if there's a question mark about dogs, if there's a question mark about landscaping. That's the kind of thing that we need to address to decide whether this is really a feasible idea. We think it is. It's been talked about in various forms in Manchester town government and organizations for something like 15 or 20 years now. This is not a new thing. But we feel that the time has come for us to take the next step, and that's what we're asking for today, is the next step. It's not a costly, we're not, it's not, there's no budget item for it. It's going to be a lot of legwork on behalf of the 2020 Task Force and some of the town people, but we need to know where this can go and how we might be able to make it happen. And there are a lot of different ways we can go. I would just like to quickly cite a couple of statistics. There's a wonderful national organization called the Rails to Trails Conservancy, and they have an incredible website full of resources on how to build, how to fund, how to manage exactly the same kinds of questions that people have asked about dogs and privacy and so on. That's our next step. That's what we're asking for approval for. I've walked the length of it. I think this trail will give particularly kids and schools and educational opportunities that are unparalleled right here in town. It passes through all kinds of ecological fields and woods and so on, and it's right near the schools and the rec center, and so kids in summer camp, kids at the schools can use it. And people of all ages will have ready access to a trail that, we're not trying to dump fancy, single, the skinny tire bikes are not going to hit this trail and go on to North Road. This is for fatter tires, younger kids, help them get used to their bikes. So we're just asking for the opportunity to work with the town to find out how can we make this happen, and we may come up with nothing. But this is the first important step to determine how could we possibly do that, and we think it's a great idea. And the Rails to Trails Conservancy shows over 22,000 miles of rail trails in this country, with another 8,000 in the works, under, being reviewed. In Vermont, there are 130 existing, 130 miles of existing rail trails. We think it's time for Manchester to jump on this bandwagon. It's very popular across the country, and we think we can develop a very, very special place for locals and our visitors to enjoy. So I hope you'll vote yes. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Judy.
I would like to just make a couple of comments. One of the gentlemen said something about illegal drug activity or illegal activity, and then we talk about statistics, but nobody has proven to me on the statistics end of it that these other trails don't have big problems with drugs or other illicit activity going on on them. Secondly, having done the Race for the Cure last year and been at the corner of Mount Aeolus Lane and North Road, I kind of agree that North Road may not be the greatest location for this to end, because it is a very dangerous road. There's two blind corners right there by Mount Aeolus Lane, as I'm standing in the middle of the road trying to direct traffic, which people just don't seem to get the whole idea of. A stop sign doesn't stop, and I have an ambulance bearing down on me coming the other way with lights flashing. It's very dangerous on that road, and I think that we really need to think about maybe looking at the North Road end of it rather than looking at the trail end of it to see if that is really a viable project.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Ron Marcus. I live on North Road, and I was the first homeowner to be sued by Bill Drunsick to take over the right-of-way. I do have a prepared speech here. We're here to vote, as we were 15 years ago, to see if a bike path is feasible. Well, I am here to say it is, and the Bill Drunsick Cornfield cul-de-sac bike path should be quite a success. Some might say a dead-end, mile-and-a-half bike path would be a waste of money and overly intrusive as it winds through people's back and front yards. To those naysayers, I say nay. The 9,000-feet-or-so length is huge, people. There are some 747s that have to land in that space, and they too would have to turn around because the path ended. There are many, many trails that end in cul-de-sacs. Most of these end at the top of a mountain, or a lake, a monument, or even a Grand Canyon. This has not stopped the bike path's visionary designer. Ours ends in a cornfield. The Bill Drunsick Cornfield cul-de-sac could become a very popular and important destination for our city-dwelling brethren. There are possibly tens of people who live in big cities that may have never seen a cornstalk. This can be a valuable learning experience and would attract big spenders and droves to the site of a tractor working the fields. How about those that don't know a hole in the ground from their donkeys? The trail ends at the Daley gravel pit. This will introduce them to the small pebbles that can be used to fill that very same hole in the ground. This knowledge could possibly keep them from losing their ass. Some might point to the numerous animal species displaced by building the trail, some of which could be endangered. They should have known better. They have been freeloading for 100 years. It's time for them to move on. Plus, who knows better how to handle endangered species in sensitive ecological areas than a railroad man? Truly, I believe a dead end for this trail is the best possible thing that can happen. If the trail had a proper right-of-way on both ends, it might only be a five-minute ride from the rec center to a busy street. Now it will actually be twice that because of the genius behind the planning. I am sure the people on Squire's Lane would love to have these sightseers parked all over their road and the rest on North Road and Aeolus Lane. Let's not forget something else. There should also be a substantial walker presence on the trail. Now, this is not to be confused with the mindless, drooling, flesh-eating, reanimated characters from The Walking Dead. I am sure they will be better dressed. On the path, they will be able to feast their eyes on strangers' backyards, garages, and houses as they pass through the fenced-in corridor designed to keep them from being mauled by the homeowners' pets. The no trespassing signs and the floodlights will add an exciting Stalag 17 atmosphere that they will be able to tell their friends about as they excitedly book their return trip to re-experience the epic journey. The path cannot feasibly be patrolled by our police department, but that just adds to the thrill of danger for the path users and even the whole neighborhood. As far as the price tag for this rail-to-trail marvel, a million? A million and a half? Two million? Nobody knows. But people, it's worth it. It's just more taxes every year, plus maintenance. It's money, nothing more. Who needs it? We will have a bike path. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm David Canal. I'm in favor of this. We haven't talked about this yet, but here's a chance to preserve a piece of our history. And for me, it's some history that connects us back to Gettysburg. This is not a path or a right-of-way, you know, this is a piece of property. And we're talking about a 15-year-old survey. I'm not sure anybody would build anything from 15-year-old data. And I want to respond to an editorial that was out a couple of weeks ago that was entitled, Vote No on Rec Paths. To me, that's a no to recreation and a no to preserving history. But I'll take some of the issues that were pointed out. Splitting properties. This is a fee simple privately-owned piece of property that's existed since 1900. And I realize it's been abandoned, it's not been used, and there's been a lot of that going on, but just because someone is not currently using their property, doesn't give you permission to plant crops or cut trees or put buildings on it, and in this case, the Supreme Court said so. Too narrow. I heard a comment that it was too narrow. Well, it's at 50 to 8 feet wide, would make it wider than most racetracks, wider than Depot Street, and at one time it was big enough for a train. Project costed $1.4 million. I don't think anybody that I'm involved with, or anybody the town is going to bring to the taxpayers, a $1.4 million project. That's just not going to happen. The chances, no chance of getting grants. Grants are likely and are routinely granted all across the country. Just last September, Bennington received $1.1 million VTRAN dollars for 2.2-mile shared use rec path, which connects their downtown Bennington to North Bennington. Studies. VTRAN is currently conducting statewide extensive studies involving bikes and pedestrians, shared road use, conditions of payment regarding public safety. They're doing extensive studies on that. For me personally, I have done over 100 miles on these rail trails in Vermont, New York, and Maine. I may be oblivious to this, but I've never noticed any suspicious people doing dubious things. I've rarely seen trash or debris. And, you know, a lot of these users are hikers and bikers and trail users. We usually pick up stuff. Oftentimes, we carry small plastic bags to do so. A hiker's motto is leave no trace. Geocacho's motto is trash in or trash out, you know, wherever we go. In other words, I think when you build these things, and I've got a firsthand experience with my sister-in-law who had a piece of property when a rail trail went in, and yes, in the beginning, it was an awful nightmare, now it's a huge asset. And I think that all the things about all the bad things and all the things that can happen, when you build these things, the bad guys will leave.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'd like to just mention that I'm sure that most of the people that were up here that are for this will not be impacted by it. They don't live on the trail. They don't have any experience of living on a trail or near a trail, and I do. I don't live on this trail, but I live on Lybrook, where the Lybrook Road is. And you can talk about property values going up, it's a frigging nightmare. You've got cars, you've got people, you've got kids up there doing drugs, you've got trash, you've got garbage. Sooner or later, you're going to have to take a stand for, when you live in your house, that you have a right to privacy, and you can't just put a two-mile trail in, because everybody that doesn't live there thinks it's a good idea. It's just an opinion, there's no question.
Thank you. Ed Moro.
As a very young person, we lived in Hastings and Dobbs Ferry, right on the border in Westchester County, on the Equinox, the, on the Aqueduct Trail, that covered, that was over the Aqueduct that runs from Croton on Hudson down to New York City. It was a great asset. The community viewed it as such. Many people used it, we used it. There are examples of these now, of this type of path around the world in every urban area and suburban communities like Hastings and Dobbs Ferry. area and suburban communities like Hastings and Dobbs Ferry around the world. We're looking at economic development, at keeping the quality of life that we have here, assuring that we continue to develop and be an attractive place that will attract both visitors and residents. The single most important asset we have in Vermont and Manchester is quality of life. And this is another example of a potential opportunity that should be explored and to improve our quality of life. And given that we're talking about exploring and examining the pros and cons, I very much support going forward, I've always approved, of seeking more information and exploring a way to do something properly. So I would urge everybody to vote in favor of this.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Jamie Dufour. I just wanted to ask Chief Hall if he could take and verify the issues with regards to the safety or non-safety of the intersection, and also if he could actually verify if it's actually true that would be a drug-related issue if we did have a trail there.
Chief Hall is interrogated if he cares to be.
Could you repeat the question again, just so I make sure that I...
I think it was two parts. One was, could you comment on the safety of the intersection with the trail? And the second had to do with the possibility of drug use, or did you have any reports related to that?
Well, I have to be honest, I don't, I'm not totally familiar where the trail would exit out onto North Road or Route 30. Assuming that that's correct, I think that any time you have any kind of public thoroughfare where the public's going to be entering into a public highway, obviously you have traffic concerns, you need to take into consideration what kind of traffic it is, sight distances and things of that nature. Quite frankly, law enforcement and police generally don't get involved in those kind of discussions. Those are generally engineering issues that are resolved, you know, by the Highway Department and the engineers and the Agency of Transportation, those kinds of things. But in general, any time you create any kind of intersection, you're going to have some exposure. In regards to your question regarding the drug activity, again, I really can't speak to the specifics of that other than the fact that any time you have a secluded, out-of-the-way area where it's open to the public and they have free access to it, you're going to have people there at some point or other that probably aren't the best of folks that you want there. But to suggest that any one particular forum would present that kind of attraction, I can't say that this would specifically be one of them, but, you know, we have people, I'm sure, that are doing things they're not supposed to be doing down at our park right in the center of town. So in general, any time you put people in a big group or open it up, you're going to have the potential. My concern, basically, just not really knowing anything other than the real preliminary discussions, and my mind has been picked on by individuals looking for my input on this, which is, this is up to the voters. I think where my expertise or I would weigh in on this is if the town were to decide to pursue this, and I suspect that I would be part of that conversation with the select board insofar as the public safety aspect of it. But I think it's too preliminary to really make any comments beyond that because I really don't have all the information.
Thank you, Bill Drunsick.
A very brief comment. I just think Ron Marcus's comments were a little bit out of order because I'm not aware of any motion on the floor to name this trail after me, so...
Thank you. Todd West. Is that Todd?
No, that's Vern.
Vern, I'm sorry.
I'm one of the ecosystems that you'll be going through. I'm one of the people, I'll be one of the ecosystems, my hayfield and such, that you'll be going through. And one of my concerns would be my dog that's already been brought up by one of my neighbors. And mine is in a fence and even off of Aeolus Lane that people walk and run on. Their dogs come on my property and get my dog going, and they act like it's my fault. But, and at the end of my driveway, it's only going to be 25 feet wide, it's going to congest a lot of things right there. And we have a piece of property that butts up against another town trail that's known as Pat Kelly Road, and you can go up and down that and find busted beer bottles, syringes, used needles, all kinds of drug palephinalia. You know, and I just, I don't feel like I want it as close to my house as it's going to be.
Yes, sir, in the rear. Ted, is it Ted Talbot? Theo.
Excuse me. Yeah, Theo now. Theo Talbot. So the Manchester Riverwalk Committee has been trying to get more pedestrian access through the center of town. At our last annual meeting, we voted in support of this trail as part of trying to make Manchester more walkable. I think the big question is, how do we respond to climate change? Are we going to build a society that plans for a future that's not based on fossil fuels? This kind of development is part of that. Vermont has made a big commitment to building a climate change economy. The Vermont Council of Rural Development just had a big meeting at Vermont Tech called Vermont Climate Economy Summit, and you should be hearing more about that as they try and build an economy around responding to climate change. So this kind of design is really what we're talking about. How do we think towards the future past cars? I'm sorry for homeowners who are impacted. I think it is sad when people have to pay a cost to the collective wealth of the community, but it seems like their property values will go up over time, so... Thanks.
Thank you. Carol Dupont.
I have a hard time believing in the state of Vermont with a town that doesn't appreciate the people that have lived there a long time, paid taxes, whatever, that they don't have a right to call out what they want done with their property. That a group of people that are not going to be affected by this, they're going to use it and whatever. Actually, I think, I find that difficult to think that Vermont town would do this to the people living there.
Thank you. In the rear.
Victoria Soulsby. My question is, what happens after this study? So who gets, once the study is completed, who's going to decide if the walking path goes through? Is it the trail committee, or is it going to be up for the voters?
Who would like to address that?
Well, it's just, at this point in study phase, I guess there'd be a lot of questions that the select board would have to ask, too. One, there was a mention of buying, the town buying this right-of-way for $70,000. You know, is the town going to invest? How do we approach it? Is...
Steve, I get, say, all the questions get answered, okay?
Okay.
All the questions get answered. The study shows that, yes, it's a viable option. Ivan, do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah.
Who's going to, who's going to get the final decision if the walking path gets to be approved?
It depends on who the owner of the property is at the point it becomes a path. The request from the owners of the property, and what I'm talking about is a railroad property, which is a separate parcel with a deed and rights that go with it, has approached the town to see if we would be interested in owning it as a path. If the town decides that we don't, we're not interested, they still have the option of developing it themselves. So I can't completely answer your question. Assuming that the town owns it ultimately, and it's a municipal path, then you collectively would have the decision-making ability on this. The select board doesn't have a dog in this fight or a horse in the race, as I prefer to phrase it. We're looking for input from this forum to see how and if we should, if and how we should pursue this.
Okay, so just to reiterate what I think I heard you say, so if the town doesn't, if the town decides that they don't want to own the property, then the owner of the trail, the right-of-way, has the option of moving it forward?
Well, they have the option of doing something with the property they own, and that would be their decision.
Okay. Thank you.
Mike.
Steedle.
I just have one question, and maybe Ellen or Robin can answer it for me. Why can you not, like the Riverwalk, form a nonprofit 501(c)(3) and do fundraising for this project and not come to the town for the process of the planning and excess of money or what have you? I think that's a question of the taxpayers that's out there. It's not an issue of that it's a nice project, it's going to be great for the town, but why this?
Is there someone from the committee that would like to address that? Amy Vern.
Yes. The way it stands right now is that there are four people that own it. If, we cannot get any grants from Rails to Trails, Vermont Bicycle Pedestrian Coalition, the Conservancy, there are so many places that money is available to make this happen. But it has to be owned by the town for any of that money to show up. And there are private, there are private people that want to get involved in this. This is not going to cost what I think people think it's going to cost. The idea is that our group will write grants once the town does own it. But we're not that far yet. But it is not a big money taker of the town's money by no means whatsoever. Most of these Rails to Trails are almost 100% paid for by other groups. But we are not able to do it as property owners. It has to be the town that owns it to get that money. I think I answered it?
Mary Cardell.
Mary Cardell. I'd like to know how many parcels or homeowners are on that trail. What are the numbers? Does anyone know?
Seven.
It's been said seven.
It's just seven. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Bill Badger.
Bill Badger. I just want to think that this is one of the most incredible opportunities, as it's come out here, to assemble a corridor like this now from multiple properties would be impossible. But this exists, and it's been here for 100 years. And it's wide enough. Rail trails are great because they're nearly level and relatively straight. And guess what? It's been well-compacted by tons of marble and locomotives over the years. So they're an easy conversion. And this would be a great asset, get pedestrian and bike traffic off North Road. North Road is dangerous, it's been pointed out a number of times. This would be a great connection back to the center of town and avoiding North Road. I just think it's an opportunity that would be crazy to pass up.
Yes, sir. Brian Keefe.
Brian Keefe. I just want to follow up on something Ellen said at the beginning of this debate, and that is about the Manchester 2020 process and essentially what brought us here. Just to briefly give some background, it was the select board that kicked that process off by inviting the Council on Rural Development to come to Manchester and to convene the forums, the multiple forums we had. So it was a select board-sponsored process. I was asked to chair the process, and it was a great turnout, and we came up with the four recommendations, the bike path being one of them, making, more than just a bike path, but making Manchester a biking destination, making it friendly to biking, and we've had a lot of discussion about that today. Ellen chaired that subgroup, and she gathered together a lot of energy from people, a lot of the people that spoke here today, other people that aren't here, existing bike groups that Joe Miles is part of, that heads Trail Networks up in the woods mainly. It's just been a very productive and exciting process. As Bill Badger just said, this is an opportunity, and I think what we're talking about right now is to authorize the select board to continue this discussion in a way to solve some of the problems or to at least discuss them and air some of the problems and issues that have come up today. So the select board kicked this whole process off. A lot of citizens have been involved in all aspects of it, and my hat's off to all the people that are involved, and I think it's appropriate that the select board take a closer look at this because after all, it was a process they kicked off, and a lot of volunteers put a lot of work into it. Thank you.
Thank you. We're, we are, we are getting to the point where Senator Udall discussed, all the points have been made, but not everyone has made them yet. I urge you, I don't generally like limiting debate, but I urge you to speak to new issues that haven't been addressed yet.
Okay, I just want to clarify one thing. Somebody said tax has been paid on this property consecutively since 1902. That's not true. It was a 35-year period where Vermont Marble at the time did not pay taxes on it. The last thing I'd like to say is, at the conclusion of this burger report, the very last thing they said, "In the best interest of the town, not to proceed with this project without the strong support of the whole community." It didn't say part of the community, it didn't say the majority of the community, it said the whole community. So we don't have the support of the whole community, and I suggest that we vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you. So the question is, shall the town support the proposed recreational path along the former Manchester-Dorset-Granville railroad right-of-way to develop a multi-use trail, non-motorized, from Manchester Elementary Middle School to North Road Wendy's Way, and authorize the select board and town officials to work on planning, land acquisition, and rights of way? All those in favor of that article, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
The chairs in doubt will have a standing vote. Please, all those in favor, please stand. You ready? No? One more? Okay, all those... Okay, all those opposed to the article, please stand. Listen to the results of your vote. Those in favor of Article 1083, those opposed, 34. And Article 10 is approved. If, excuse me, please, if there's no objection, we'll move on to Articles 12 through 15, which are for discussion only, as they will be voted by Australian ballot on Tuesday, and we'll come back to Article 11 once we've completed those articles. So, is there any objection to that procedure? Hearing none, we'll move on to Article 12. Shall the town appropriate $3,250 for the support of the Retired Senior Volunteer Program? Is there any yes ma'am?
Hi, I'm Sunny Leparati. I'm the Director of the Green Mountain RSVP Program. We're sponsored also by the Southwestern Vermont Council on Aging, which is Article 13. So, if I can speak on both, I'd be happy about that. So for Article 12, we're requesting $3,250. This is the same amount we request every year, so it's not an increase. And we recruit and match volunteers who are 55 and over and place them in nonprofits to meet community needs in the community, like meals on wheels, transportations for medical and non-medical needs, and bone builders classes. We have over 13 bone builders classes in the county. We serve over 500 people through those classes. In this past year, in Manchester alone, our volunteers have served over 480 hours, and in Bennington County together, they've served 16,000 hours. So we have volunteers all throughout Bennington County, and we also have volunteers in Windsor and Wyndham County as well.
Thank you. If you can stay—
I'll try, I'm nervous.
If you can stay right there, we'll come back to you for Article 13.
Sure.
Is there anyone else who wants to discuss Article 12?
Yep.
Yes, excuse me. Go ahead with Article 13.
All right. Article 13, Southwestern Vermont Council on Aging serves Bennington and Rutland County. They provide senior meals to people in the county, and as well, they also provide case management services, the senior helpline. Last year, over, so 3,594 meals were served to 30 elders in Manchester. And for case management, we serve 63 people in the community, and to help them remain living in their homes and connect them with services to stay out of long-term institutions. Let me just try to think. We also served 49 individuals at senior meal sites, providing 1,472 meals this last year.
Thank you.
Yep, sorry.
Anyone else with questions on Article 13? If not, we'll move on to Article 14. Shall the town appropriate $25,000 for the support of the partnership? Brad Meyers.
This article, I believe, is out of order and should not have even been on the ballot. Here's why. Pursuant to our vote of several years ago, the 2014 Town Report, the article was, "Shall the Town Vote on Appropriations Authorized Under 24 Vermont Statutes Annotated, Section 2691, Aid to Social Services, That Are Greater Than $2,500 by Australian Ballot?" It was adopted by two votes. So only aid to social service agencies can legally be adopted by Australian ballot by the town. And the statute that is referenced in, that, the statute that allows for appropriations to social services agencies, which is 24 Vermont statutes annotated, Section 2691, which is captioned "Aid to Social Services for Town Residents." At a meeting duly warned, a town or incorporated village may appropriate such sums of money as it deems necessary for the support of social services programs. And then it goes on to list what they are. The requested appropriation, albeit by Australian ballot, of $25,000 for the partnership, has nothing to do with social services. It has to do with promotion of the, of a marketing initiative involving the Chamber of Commerce as part of a regional group. That's not social services. So I don't know if it's appropriate to move that the question be struck, or it's out of order, or what. But I think that any, if it is approved by the voters, an initiative that shouldn't even been on the ballot in the first place, I think it's subject to legal challenge.
Mike? My understanding of the issue is, we cannot vote to change, we cannot vote at this meeting to change how an article is warned. We deal with the warning that we have, and if someone feels that it was wrongly warned as an Australian ballot item, then they need to challenge that in court. But we would not be authorized to vote today whether or not this will go by Australian ballot, since it has not been warned to do that. So, we can have further discussion on Article 14, but as to not taking action on it Tuesday, we're not authorized to do that, my understanding, subject to challenge. John O'Keefe?
Would legal counsel yield for some free legal advice? I beg your pardon?
Free legal advice is worth what you pay for.
I know that. I know that too well. So is it the gentleman's opinion that all of the other articles are warned appropriately and fall under the auspices of 2691?
I would say that I think that's not germane to our discussion. Our discussion is Article 14 at this point. If someone wants to raise it on Article 15, they may as well, but we're not going to decide that today. We're just discussing these five, or four articles, 12 through 15, at this time. So if anyone has questioned, comment, or would like to speak in favor or oppose to any of these articles, this would be your chance. Seth Bongardt.
Mr. Monitor, I want to speak in favor of this article.
Thank you.
We all agree that this is one of the greatest places in the world to live. Living here is really a privilege, I think we all believe that. But it's also true that it can be a difficult place to make a living. We hear laments constantly about the lack of opportunity for young people, and the fact that we have a hard time retaining them. There's also, as we all know, a lot of poverty. We've talked a lot today about drugs, which really comes from poverty, and a lack of opportunity. And what the partnership is about, and this $25,000, is trying to do something about it. We've had two significant economic development reports issued in the last several months. The first one was the Southern Vermont Economic Development Study commissioned by the Legislature and chaired by Wayne Grenquist of Weston, who most of us know. The result, what that report, the conclusion that report reached, based on all the evidence, was that these, the southern two counties have not recovered from the recession. The headline in the report, reflected in the Manchester Journal when the report was issued, was "Urgent Action Required." We also had recently the North Shore Economic Development Study, paid for, incidentally, in large part with a $25,000, with $25,000 from the town of Manchester, I think it was 15 from Dorset and five from the village, I think I have that right, looking at the state of the area's economy and the steps we can take to improve it. So we're heavily invested in this. I believe we have a lot at stake. Now, we know the state of studies. They almost all are issued, they get the headline, and then they go on the shelf. On Tuesday, we'll be faced with the choice of whether that happens, especially with the report of the North Shore Economic Development Study Committee. That report specifically looks to the partnership to take on many of the economic development initiatives needed for us to go forward. Let me just, a quick little bit of background about this. 16 months ago, the Chamber approached me and leaned on him to facilitate a process looking at how the Chamber could reinvent itself, to transform itself into an organization that can make a difference in the communities, in the 18 communities that it served. The partnership emerged from a process involving 14 focus groups, at which we asked a series of questions about people, what people wanted for the region, and how they perceived how a new organization could help make it happen. Every group, which ranged from education to lodging owners, to some groups that we had, we just invited anybody and everybody who could come, all said the same thing, that we need to build on our tourism economy, we need to professionalize it and take it to another level, and that we need underneath, because of the vagaries of that economy, as we are witnessing this winter, no matter how well you do it, we need a solid base of economic opportunity underneath of that. We need to be able to help homegrown businesses be successful, help entrepreneurs get off the ground, and then for the organization to be able to follow through on inquiries and leads. And the reality is that this works only with an experienced professional staff, and only if done on a regional basis, and only if it's a public-private partnership. We have met with all of the Select Boards in these towns, and been very well-received at all of the Select Boards, all saying, yes, you're doing the right, this is the right idea, this is what we need to do. Dorset actually put it directly into the budget. Other towns are voting on Tuesday, along with Manchester, about whether to fund their portion of this initiative. So in the end, what we're talking about is pooling resources to get a much bigger bang for the buck, to be able to take those two elements on that everybody talked about that we need to do. So this work of reimagining the Chamber was well underway before these studies themselves were underway. People saw the need. The private sector has contributed nearly $80,000 to get this up and running, and is waiting now to see if the public component can come into the mix. When that happens, when Manchester and other towns vote to do this, more private sector money will follow. What this is really about is professional, well, hire, the first hire will be to hire an experienced economic development professional. The immediate agenda will be to work with the planning commissions from the 18 towns and the public to develop an inventory of appropriate sites for different levels and types of economic development opportunities. Some of that might, some of that work might involve suggestions to tweak town plans or ordinance to either accommodate the kind of appropriate scale and type of development that this area is looking for, or even to point out a way that a town may be vulnerable to something it doesn't want. The person will meet with Select Boards, keep them in the loop. With the inventory in hand, the next step will be to develop a case statement of why the area is attractive for many types of businesses. He or she will work to develop relationships with people in state government, within the economic development industry, and with the people in the communities that this new partnership will serve. The person will develop the tools to be able to follow up, the kind of inquiries the Chamber gets now, but has no ability to follow up on. He or she will work with the Small Business Development Corporation at state government level, and even with the senior core of retired executives here. The second hire will likely be a convention and group sales associate to go to trade shows and work market segments that could help bring groups and conventions to the area. The real point of this is that nobody is going to do this for us. We talk all the time about lamenting the fact that there's not opportunities for young people. We tend to want to blame others for it, blame my pillar. The truth of the matter is, nobody's going to do it but us. And this is the vehicle for getting it done. Andrew McKeeva wrote in the Manchester Journal a few weeks ago in support of this, saying that the stars are aligned. This is the moment in time to make this happen. Because we have the vehicle in place, it's actually already in gear with the initial round of private money, then now it's time for the public to put in its portion of the money, which can in turn lead to that much more private investment. We have an experienced person to lead this in the form of Berta McGinnis. We have a very thoughtful board of people at the new partnership. So this, I guess what I would say is, this re-envisioned organization is the right opportunity at the right time. Today, we've had a lot of talk about making the right choices to invest in this community, and this is really another opportunity to do the same thing. This is an investment. For the portion of money that Manchester will put in, we're leveraging, just like with so many of these other articles that we've talked about today, we will in turn be leveraging so much more money, be leveraging what the other towns put in, and then in turn, because they'll have the commitment from the public to help make this happen, we'll be able to leverage more money from the private sector. This is really about whether we're committed to doing something after years and years of talking about doing it, and whether we really have the optimism to believe in ourselves and believe that this area can be as successful as I think a lot of us think it really can be. And so, what I, I am here today just to, I believe, I've come to believe very strongly in the partnership, and in the need for this to happen, and in the need for us to develop opportunities for young people, and opportunities for our friends and neighbors, and to help make this place be as economically successful as it truly has the opportunity to be. Thanks.
Thank you. You very well timed, eight seconds left.
Oh, wow, what if you were trying—
Anyone else on this article? Dick Smith?
Seth is a hard act to follow, but I'll try and give a couple of comments without repeating what he said. My personal feeling is, this is a, you know, Manchester is absolutely fabulous, and you want to promote Manchester, but we don't want to leave anything on the table. And when you look at, we have tremendous assets here, and attractions and everything else, but a lot of the real attractions are in other communities. Dorset Playhouse, the Horse Show, if we ever lost the Horse Show, even the ski areas and so on. So to help Manchester, we really have to take a regional approach. And one of the solutions is, as Seth said, the solution is in this partnership, public-private, other funds and so on. A great example, I think, is this, the National Center for Arts Research, it's SMU in Dallas, last year announced that for the towns, 1 million people or less in the United States, and there are about 21,000 or 30,000 of these towns, depending on whether it's village versus town versus marketing area. Bennington County was 15 out of 20 in the United States. That's a tremendous compliment. But each town doesn't have enough to promote itself. I mean, the Reader's Park is great, so the Vermont Art Center is great, that little, the bear down there in Arlington that the lady puts on and so on, that's very good, but taken together, individually, it's not worth promoting, but taken together, we have a tremendous asset here. You have to take a regional approach. Go Stowe, they actually include Barry, the Rock of Ages, 20 minutes away, because they want people to come to that area rather than go on to Burlington. Lake Placid doesn't promote just Lake Placid, they also promote Whiteface Mountain, which is actually in a different town. And actually, Ned's the report that Seth— And actually, NED's, the report that Seth referred to, said, quote, "Pursue regional marketing," and that's what this partnership does. Just a couple of quick comments on the Chamber. I think they've earned it. The Visitor Center, I don't believe any public funds came for that, it was a great partnership. The Chamber was promoting the Shire's Byway, which created the Byway, that's now on a website and so on. And also, the Chamber serves more than just business. I've heard some people say, well, it's a business thing. No, it doesn't. When you think about the residents, the Tractor Parade here in Manchester, the Community Potluck Dinner we had, concerts in the park and so on, the Chamber supports more than just businesses here in, here in Manchester. One thing that sort of just a little tweaked me, a little, the Rutland Economic Group is partnering with Castleton. And it would be kind of interesting to see if maybe if we could partner somehow with the university or one of these colleges to really do a market study, because even that NED's study did not do focus groups of the visitors that come to Manchester. And with the Visitor Center and so on, we could do some sort of study to see really why people are coming here, why they don't. I mean, is it really the Roundabout? Is it the Park House? Is it skiing? Is it the Horse Show? Is it hits on the website? Is it radio? What is it? We all have our own perception, but it'd be nice to have a report that would show this, and then we might even be able to cut some costs where we're putting money in and it doesn't count. So that's a frustration I sensed here. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. We're almost talking only to the ballot counters at this point, but come ahead.
This is Wilbur Rice, and I've been a businessperson in town here since 1970. I'm also one of the private contributors to the partnership to date, and I want to, I thank Mr. Smith for the work he did just now, and to Seth for excellent work. Therefore, I don't have much to say, which I know is important right now at this hour. I think this is critically important, and I think that a comment that Ivan made earlier about the investment this community makes in itself is important in how we survive and grow, and this is an incredibly important investment. And I think it's in all of our benefits, and I think it's a responsibility we have. And I urge people to vote yes on it on Tuesday. Thanks.
Thank you. Steve Berry?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just want to affirm what has been spoken by Seth and the others. This is a fantastic opportunity for our town, and I think that it is forward-thinking. I think that the opportunities that avails us, which we don't even know at this particular moment, will coalesce with this partnership. I'm 100% in favor of it, and thank you all very much for working so hard to make this possibility come true.
Thank you. Berta?
I think I was cleared, so I might speak earlier.
You were, you were.
Okay. I'm Berta McGinnis. I'm Executive Director of Manchester and the Mountains Regional Chamber of Commerce, soon to be the partnership, and I appreciate all of you staying and all of you at home are having dinner. I'd like to get you to pay attention as well. I think that all of the things that we've heard today, we've heard leverage, we've heard opportunity, if we care about the work that's been done on the Roundabout, the work that's been done on the Rec Park, the work that's going to be done on the fields, the arts and culture area, the library, the town green improvement, the new investment in town, it's not going to move forward unless the partnership takes the helm. These are critical projects. The NED strategy said the partnership is the catalyst, along with others. We can't do it alone, but this is the most important decision that we have to make for this community and this region. This region, if you drive around it, is the best region in the state of Vermont. It is absolutely, has nowhere to go but up. We have to fill three more hotels. We've got new fields coming, we're going to have tournaments coming. These things have to move, and they can only move through the partnership. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else on Article 15? If not, Article 16, we're unable to discuss, which is the election of officers. So we'll go back to Article 11 to transact any other business appropriate to come before town meeting. Ostry Kilburn?
I'm Ostry Kilburn. I just have a question, not about the money, but about the name of the partnership. I'm thinking that somebody in a different town, thinking of coming to Manchester, will be looking for information from the Chamber of Commerce. I think anybody in the United States knows what a Chamber of Commerce is. Partnership doesn't tell me anything. I would not be searching for that word. I'm wondering the rationale between, for something like that, and how anybody from, who's never been to Manchester, would ever access that kind of information with a name like that. Thank you.
Berta, do you want to address that?
Are you still on? No, I'm going off. The Visitor Welcome Center, which is in place, as you know, will still be the Visitor Welcome Center. The parent of that will be the partnership. It's seven days a week. We saw 1,700 people when we were across from Adams Park, we now see 14,000. That will only go up, and so will our rooms and meals, and so will all the other things, but we will still be a Visitor Welcome Center.
Will you still maintain the name, the Chamber of Commerce? I think that's a concern.
The Chamber of Commerce will be the partnership, operating the Visitor Welcome Center.
So someone searching for Manchester Chamber of Commerce would find?
Will be, will be fine, will be a regional partnership. Many, many of our areas are so, Area Association, many of our areas are regional.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything else they'd like to bring up? Betsy?
Well, I'm, I'm-
Did I skip your-
Yeah, you skipped us.
I'm sorry. I talked about Article 15 in relation to this.
Yep.
I had skipped ahead.
That's all right.
So we have Article 15, which is, shall the town appropriate $207,900 for the support of the Manchester Community Library?
All right. Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to speak this afternoon. My name is Betsy Blakely, and I'm the Executive Director of the Manchester Community Library and a resident of Manchester. Actually, you know, the day is long, and I will be very brief, but we would like to, on behalf of the staff, the volunteers, and the trustees of the library, we would just like to register our gratitude to the townspeople of Manchester for their support of the library low these past dozen years. And we hope that you will agree that the library, open now for about 15 months, has demonstrated what we bring also to the quality of life in our community, similar to some of the other things that have been discussed today, and that we hope that you will continue to offer us support of our operating budget. Again, just to keep things brief, I would direct your attention to read the information that is provided about the library's incredible growth in use and the roles that the library plays in our community and our operating budget. All of this can be found on pages 27 to 29 in the green Part B booklet. And if there are any questions, I'm here, my board chair is here. Our treasurer had to leave because of the late hour of the day, but he's also available. I have his direct phone number. If anyone has any questions that they'd like to do privately, we're available prior to the voting at the polls on Tuesday. So again, thank you very much for your support, and hope that if you haven't come to the new library, you'll come and check out all that's happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy, and I'm sorry for skipping over that. Steve Nichols?
Betsy, I think you've done a great job. It's a beautiful facility. I know that I've had some questions for you and some thoughts and town taxpayer dollar, but I just have one question. Is there any plans to decrease the amount of money next year for what you're asking for?
Well, as you might know, and I haven't heard any questions directly from you before, Steve, so I'm happy to answer whatever you might have. This, the amount that we're asking for 2017, actually, the taxpayer share of our budget is going down, which means that we at the library are shouldering more of the burden to meet our operating expenses through alternate revenue streams. So I think that's a step in the right direction, even with the small increase, 2.5% over the last two years. That, you know, I think I heard at a select board meeting that if you don't keep moving forward, you're sliding back, and that expenses do grow. So I think we've kept up with other costs of other budgets, and again, we are shouldering more of the burden to operate the library. So, does that answer your question?
Thank you. Greg Cutler?
Betsy, I have a quick question.
Sure.
Greg Cutler, everybody knows me, I think, to a degree. What is the cost per family for Manchester residents? Because I think a household fee now is $75.
Well, that's for a non-resident?
For a non-resident, I'm sorry, for a non-resident. And it's $45 for an individual non-resident?
Well, no, that's again, for a non-resident.
Right. So do you, what, do you know what it is?
I know-
For me, or a family in Manchester?
I'd have to know the value of your house to figure that out. I know for the last tax year, we have a, an actual tax bill of a home that was valued, I think, at $243,500, and what they paid last year was $41.15, I think. So, and that's about 1% of the taxes that an average family would pay with that price of a house. So obviously-
Well, do you, and I'll just end this, I just wanted to raise it, just to get you thinking about ways to equalize or make that number fair for the people who are paying taxes and supporting the library, actually, in Manchester, with the people who are using it from outside. So-
You mean, you want Manchester taxpayers to pay more?
No, because I've been, I've been looking at the numbers, figuring out that per person in a household, it could be $200 versus 75 if they're four-
Are you talking about the non-residents? You're looking-
I'm talking about, I'm talking about whether or not you look at a family of four in Manchester versus a quote-unquote $75 fee to a household outside of Manchester. So whether or not there's equity in what people pay outside of Manchester and what people in Manchester pay. I don't know if you've looked at those numbers, maybe, you know. I did some short math and found that it seemed like people in Manchester in a household, if there was more than X, if you divide it up, maybe you pay more. Maybe you haven't seen that, I'm just, I'm raising the question, and do you look at whether it's fair and equitable, just person to person?
I'm not sure what you're, are you worried about the non-residents, what they're paying?
I'm worried about whether Manchester residents are actually paying much more-
This, this family of four, I know, in that household, they pay $41 and they get a free membership to the library.
Right.
So, you know?
I get that.
Yeah. So that's, that fam, that person, and it's a, that family, it's two adults and two kids, they live in that household, and with the taxes that they pay, they get a free membership at the library, for four. So that's $10 a person in that household. Now, if that household only had two people-
If you take 207,000 and you divide it by the number of residential taxpayers, it comes out to X. So I just was wondering whether or not you consider that in your, in how you create fees, and-
The fees for the non-residents, is that what you're saying?
Whether or not there's equity to the, to the town, the taxpayers of the town and the non-residents. But I'll leave it, we'll leave it, and I just wanted to raise the question.
Okay. Maybe, maybe we can meet about that.
Excuse me. We have two people talking back and forth. I gather your question has been answered?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. O'Keefe, would you like to be recognized?
Gentlemen, I'm from Southern Manchester. There's a couple of places, I did do the math here.
Can't hear you.
Please go to your microphone.
Sorry, it wasn't really that important of a point to actually walk this far. If you take the total number that's appropriated and you divide it by the number of residents in town, a different way to look at it, it's $47 per person. So like, my house has four people, so that would be-
But that's not what you're paying.
$189. It varies, you know, and actually, I don't know, it's printed on my tax bill, but I'm just saying, if you grind it up by the person, it's about $189.
But that's not what you pay if you look at your tax bill?
No, I could pay, actually, I can't really pay back and forth, but actually, you could pay more than that. But if you do it per person, that's what it comes out-
No, no, well, I have an actual tax bill of an actual family of four. They gave it to me, they're proud that for what they used the library, that it only cost them $41.15. That was last year. So it'll cost them 5% more this year. So unless you have a house, I mean, if you had a house that's a half a million dollars, then you might pay more on your household. The line on your, on your tax bill is not a per-person line.
Right.
It is by household.
Taxes and user fees are two different things. We're comparing apples and oranges. So it is, I think the original question was just, this is a way that you might look at it. Have you considered it? Please consider it for the future, right?
And I'd like to get more about what Greg was talking about, so perhaps we can-
And you can-
-delve into that.
I'll talk about it after we've gone home to dinner, hopefully.
Right, we're over dinner.
Anyone else on Article 15? If not, anyone else on any other matter, other business not covered already? If, if so, is there a motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
Seconded by Greg Cutler, moved by Richard. And all those in favor, please leave.